All right, we are back in session. I had to call this Tampa City Council meeting to order a roll call, please.
Miranda. Dingfelder. Viera.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Goode.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
All right, Ms. Glover, you're on. Go ahead and continue with your presentation.
I'm here, and there's some slides. Okay, let me pick up right here and then turn off the recording process. Um, just before we, um, broke for lunch, we talked about phase of the audit, so that's gonna lead right into the reporting process. So what happens anytime during the course of the audit, whether it's in the planning phase or the fieldwork phase, remember in planning, after we document the internal controls, we do an, uh, the processes, we do analysis of the internal control, we could find an internal control deficiency, so we make a recommendation that maybe control would be. In the fieldwork, um, phase, we're testing the internal controls and make sure they are working as designed or the way that we'd anticipate they would work. So anytime we might find a, um, recommendation, we document that on a form called an audit inquiry form. This form has a recommendation in the exact format that, um, you would see in an audit report. And we send that out to management, the affected management, put a suspense date on it, like seven days. And what we're looking from, from them is if they agree with the recommendation, what they're gonna do to correct it, or if they, we maybe, um, somehow we didn't get some information or something like that, and we would work that out throughout the course of the audit. At the end of the audit, the intent of that form is really for nobody to be surprised at the end of the audit. So at the end of the audit, we take all audit inquiry forms, that will be all of our recommendations, and all the ones that we consider reportable, we compile them into a draft report. Um, so management is not surprised when they see what's in the report because they've gotten that throughout the course of the audit. We send the draft report back out to management again, and we call that a request for final review. So we give them another opportunity to look at the report in its entirety and may update their management responses potentially during the course of the audit, they may be corrected something or whatever, given that opportunity. At the end, at that request for final review, we then take the draft report and we send it to the chief of staff and the mayor. At, um, once we get that sign off from the mayor, we consider report final and it's published and distributed based on the established policy. And if you're in tab five in your binder, um, in addition to the process flow that we just went over about how can, um, the reporting process, you are also in policy, and this is a policy that the mayor signed, and this is what we follow in the report distribution. Um, I talked about the government audit standards and here, excerpt from it in the discussion, I talked about, um, the internal audit department being, um, independent and be, um, free from any unreasonable restrictions on the time allowed to complete the audit or engagement or issue a report. And so it's on this, we establish a policy that you see a number three in that policy, which is if we issue a report and there are no recommendations, the chief of staff will return it to us within ten days, then we can distribute. If, if there are recommendation, the mayor has forty days, forty calendar days to review the draft report and return it to us, because sometimes her schedule may be very hectic and she has things going on. But if we don't get it back from her on that forty-first day, then we, the, I can release the report without her, um, signature, um, and return it to us. At that point, we distribute the report, and that distribution includes sending it to city council, the affected management, and post it on the internal audit page of the, um, the website. Now, one of the things I do track is how long that distribution process takes from when we send it to the mayor. And, um, in fiscal year 2020, the average number of days of reports that were completed during her administration, um, was nine days. So we averaged nine days her getting report back to us, and so far in fiscal year 2021, is averaging about eleven days her returning the reports to us. Okay? All right, so can we see the next slide?
Before you continue, Councilman Dingfelder, you have a question, sir? I see your hand up.
Yeah, but just while we're back on that flow chart, Christine, could you back on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, in regard to this draft report to the mayor, um, I know that you operate under a lot of like sort of national standards and best practices and that sort of thing. And tell me about how that part of this relates to the national, you know, national standards and all. I mean, is a dra, is a draft report to the administrator even part of the best practices and national standards?
Well, there's nothing wrong with management having a first review before it's published. That's one of the reasons why I went through the whole process. When we give the audit inquiry to management, I mean, they already seen it. And a lot of times, if something is significant, it can rise to the level of the mayor before we even get to the reporting process. So there's nothing wrong with management having a first look, it's not necessarily a requirement, but the, the problem would come in is if that, that process holds up the distribution of a report for an excessive period of time. And that is not, right now.
What, didn't, didn't exactly answer the question as related to national practices and best standards, but, or best practices, but maybe you can clarify that. But I guess my key question is, is what is the point of that final review by the chief of staff and the mayor? I mean, what if, we have a wonderful chief of staff and a wonderful mayor right now, but, but as, as the rabbi said at the beginning of the meeting, we always have to prepare for the future. So what, what if this city and this county, this community had a, an evil mayor and an evil chief of staff? And, and, and they were still operating under this process? Could, you know, could they, at that point in time during that forty-day review, you know, could they doctor it up and send it back and say reject it and this and that? I mean, I mean, what is the point of having that additional report period of forty days for it to potentially sit on some future mayor's desk?
Okay, so another reason why early at the beginning of this administration, of this workshop, I talked about how we had those ten professional sta, um, licenses of the internal audit staff, and I talked about the government auditing standards. Because we have to follow those standards, comply with, and we have ethics and things we have to comply with, with our certifications, and well, we can be not certified, they can take our license away. And in that peer review, when they come and look at us, if we are not, if it appears, if we give the appearance, so example, um, that it's taken excessive period of time to get the orders out, they can cite us not in compliance with the audit standards, and that would be very bad for the city of Tampa. Now you really would have a deformed audit department. Furthermore, there isn't an auditor in this shop that's gonna sign a report that's been edited, because that's our license. Only thing the city can do is terminate us, but if we don't have, we're not licensed, we can't get a job anyplace else.
Okay, but then that circles back to my original question, which is why, why do they, why do we have such a long review period in there of forty days? Uh, potentially forty days, I understand Mayor Castor is very quick and thorough and gets it done in ten days. Why don't we just have a ten or fifteen day review period there instead of forty days?
Well, we could have that, and actually prior to, um, um, Mayor Castor, there was no policy on how long that period was. And when this administration came in, I presented to them that as being a problem, that it could, uh, audit could be held too long, or we could be perceived as that language from the, um, as not being independence, and so this is what we negotiated, actually put something in place. There was no policy previous to how long that could be held.
Okay, so we're making improvements and maybe we could even improve it further in the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Councilman Goode, Councilman Carlson.
Well, now that, my question is, why is it there? If the audit is complete and it's submitted, why this long timeframe? So like, I guess we kind of cleared some of that up, but to me still, if I submit the audit, I'm the auditor and I submit the audit, I'm submitting the audit, so I don't, there's this grace period of that long a time to review or have a review. I'm, I'm not really clear on that. You're trying to clean it up, but to me, I'm still just focused on that portion there. I don't see why you need to have that long to review. Eubex, sir.
It doesn't have to be, um, that's just what we, I negotiated with the administration, that we needed to have something in place. Um, so we get rid of that appearance, and, um, that's what we negotiated as being a reasonable, um, period of time. And, um, we are not, um, getting anywhere near, near that time period at all, so we being good towards that. But I just don't, you know, wanna have, give that appearance that maybe we can't re, um, release the audit, there is a restriction on it. But, um, there's nothing wrong with management, as I said before, having a first look. And so that happens throughout the course of the audit, with the audit inquiry, it's not our intent to surprise anybody, and we wanna make sure we have our facts straight, and whether we like it or not, we have to oblige to report the facts as we find them. Whether management likes it or not, it's factual, then we have to report it that way. And, um, we have been doing that, so, I mean, it, like I said, it doesn't have to be, but that is just what we negotiated at this point in time. There was nothing there before.
Councilman Carlson.
Sorry, I just have to weigh in. Um, the, the hypothetical that Mr. Dingfelder, Councilman Dingfelder threw out there is not a hypothetical, it happened for eight years. Uh, we had a mayor that you served under partly, who the community felt was, uh, at the very least incompetent, unethical, and a bully. Um, the, the allegation was that the last mayor sat on, uh, audits for months and months and months. City council, I remember, was very frustrated, and that's why I think it went to the charter. Um, the, the question is, how would anybody know? Uh, the allegation there was that he was holding on to the report so he could fix the problems, so that by the time it went to the media and to, and to the city council, he would have fixed the problems already. But, um, how, how would anybody have known if he bullied you all to, to change something? And, and we're talking about hypotheticals for the future, because somebody like that could come back again conceivably if the public is convinced. Uh, but how do we, how do we make sure? There, there has to be checks and balances. And with that system, um, you know, the folks I talked to at the time felt like it was, everything was one-sided.
Well, um, um, Councilman Carlson, that was where the external peer review comes in. Those folks are not bullied in any way or not affected by the mayor. They can cite the internal part, the audit department for the city as being not in compliance with the standards, and I believe that would make headlines. That check, it happens every three years, we get that peer review by our external team from someplace else in the country, totally unaffected by, um, the mayor.
But as we've seen.
Mr. Chairman.
If, if I could just say this, and I'll be quiet about it. As we've seen in other countries, and even in our own country, and then locally, if someone is somewhat charismatic and convinces the public and the media that they're doing a job, uh, sometimes that's a veneer that covers the, the reality that we've been dealing with the last two years, which is that the city had all kinds of horrible problems, uh, from race relations, ignoring certain parts of the city, allowing rats to run around, um, there, there's, I mean, the city was not professionally run, uh, before this administration took over. And, uh, somehow we have to, whether it's an audit or some other thing that we call it, we, we have to have checks and balances so the city council can, can provide oversight, uh, because the, the public didn't know, and I don't think the public still knows how bad the situation was. The economy happened to do well, uh, but even if you track the economics of it, Tampa didn't do as well as the, as, as other cities. Um, we, we were a failure in many, many ways. And, um, we've gotta have, uh, you know, honest insightful information to hold a, a bad administration accountable. This administration is great, and we're all working collaboratively, but what happens if, if somebody like that comes back? And how do we deal with it to make sure that we don't allow incompetence, you know, and unethical behavior to, to run supreme?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, this is Gina Grun.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna mention a couple things. Um, you heard Ms. Glover say that there is now a policy in place that, um, limits the, the timeframe for the mayor and the chief of staff to review the completed audit. So the issue that you're raising about what happened in the past is no longer relevant. The other thing I do wanna mention is, as all of you know, we've been working on an ordinance, um, to implement a charter provision. And, um, what that charter provision authorizes council to do is to request audits. I just wanna be clear that it does not authorize council to direct all of the affairs of the audit department. That's something that falls squarely within the powers and authorities of the mayor under, um, under the charter, under section four point oh one of the charter. So I know we, we have an ordinance that we're gonna address next, but, um, I don't want council to, to, um, allow that discussion to lead into we need to adopt policies about how the audit department is operated, because that is something that's within the authority only of the mayor.
All right. Thank you very much.
And what we are doing, um, as far as that review, is in compliance with the standards, it's not outside of the standards. The sta, standards allow some flexibility in how you do some things, but what we're doing is in compliance with the standards, because it's been that way, and we had peer reviews where we found to be in compliance with the standards. Okay? Um, can I have the next slide, please? That was the, um, policy, so the next slide. So a, a few other, um, areas of responsibility for the department. A post-audit review is basically a follow-up review. Six, twelve months after you issued a report where we had recommendations, we go back and make sure that, um, management has addressed, um, whatever the recommendation was, whatever the finding was. And we do issue a report back to the mayor, um, and the relevant management indicating where there's compli, whether there's compliance or not. To that, every audit where we've had a recommendations. Now, a non-audit service is a special kind of review that we can do as requested by management. Standards allow us to do that, it has a provision, so sometimes our skills and expertise can be used to assist in some areas as long as it doesn't put a threat to our independence. Um, typically, we establish a written agreement with management regarding, um, what we gonna do and that, and them being responsible for it. Um, and I wanted to give you a sample of, um, one, um, a few years back when we first went, um, to Oracle. There was some conflict between revenue and finance and human resources regarding the roles that are played in the payroll process by the two different departments. And so what we did, we did, um, a, we benchmarked some other jurisdictions that were using Oracle and found out how they had those roles separated. And then we provided that information to revenue and finance and human resources so they could use that information to help structure themselves appropriately. So, um, something along those lines, just like the, um, chapter twenty-six point five compliance review that we're gonna talk about, I guess, a little bit later today. Um, a third thing that we have as an, um, um, area of responsibility is the, the city's fraud hotline. Um, we do, those, with those calls that come to us, we have a vendor actually get the calls, but they come to us, and we make recommendations to the administration regarding how, whether we should be investigated or who should investigate, it's a HR issue, sometimes it's a possible fraud that we might investigate. And we have oversight over that hotline to make sure every, um, call that comes in that, um, gets, um, handled through, um, completion. So, um, those are other areas of responsibility. Can we go to the next slide, please? All right, so just wanted to look at some of our performance. In your, um, binder, on the tab, um, six, you have a, a annual report, and it's a whole report, um, that I do annually, look at the performance of the department, but I just wanna go over a couple slides out of that report, so here's one. And this shows our activity, and if you can look back from 2015 to where we have, um, improved and the number of audits we completed, number of non-audit services and things along those lines. I just wanted to see that we put efficiencies in place starting with, you know, 2013 that allowed us with the same size staff, where they were doing maybe twelve or thirteen audits a year, we were getting up in the nineteen to twenty, um, range. This last fiscal year, I think we only completed actually sixteen, but we did a lot more non-audit services than we had been. So I wanted you to see that performance. Can I see the next slide, please? This next slide shows some performance measures for the department. Um, these are national, um, metrics. Um, the, the direct time to available time is how much time that an auditor is available. They, um, actually speaking, working on audits versus training or some other administrative functions, and also direct time to total time. Well, I kinda like available time because, um, total time includes benefit time, which means when they might be on leave as well. And so there's standards for that, um, eighty percent of the, um, direct time is the standard, um, to available time, and, um, seventy percent is the, uh, standard for the direct time to a total. So the red line that's gonna cross the graph show you where the standards are, and you can see that we are actually performing very well meeting those, um, metrics. Okay? Next slide, please. So also in tab, um, seven in your binder, this is just a front page. Um, you have the total, the, um, full peer review report from the, um, external team that did our 2017, um, peer review, and they found that we were in compliance with the standards. I just gave you that piece of, but you have the full report in your binder if you wanna refer to that. Next slide. I think we're gonna, um, skip over this right now because that goes into the draft order. Next slide. Um, prepared to answer any questions you have regarding the function of the internal audit department.
Do we have any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. Next up, we'll take item number eight, which is, uh, part, uh, part two of this. Item number eight, we have a memo from our city attorney transmitting a draft ordinance on the agenda item.
Councilman, this is Gina Grun, city attorney.
Yes.
Um, this draft ordinance is an ordinance to amend the code to implement a 2016 charter amendment regarding audit requests by city council. I, um, was asked to prepare this ordinance and, um, briefly brought it before council back in December. Um, at that time, a couple of the council members requested some additional changes to it, which were made and presented to you a couple weeks ago. Um, last evening and then this morning, um, again, Councilman Dingfelder and I, um, discussed some additional minor, what he calls tweaks that he'd like to make to it. So, um, in the interest of time, um, we thought it would be more efficient today if, um, rather than doing a presentation on this ordinance, if we, um, go back offline and, um, address those, those tweaks that he'd like to make and then bring it back, um, in another month with, with all the changes. And I think at that point, we won't have to have a, a, a long protracted discussion about it.
When, when were you thinking, at the eighteenth meeting or later on at the March fourth meeting?
I'll leave that up to Mr. Dingfelder.
Councilman Dingfelder, your pleasure.
Um, I think, um, first meeting in March would be fine.
All right, may I have a motion then to continue this to March fourth? Uh, right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Great, thank you. All right. Next up, we go to the EBO items, which is, uh, item number seven. I'm sorry, um, we're gonna take item number six first and then take item number five.
Okay, so, non-audit service, I'm back. Um, I explained the last, um, in the workshop, what a non-audit service was. And, um, I guess because of the, um, EBO, um, workshop coming up, we did this non-audit service at request of the chief of staff, um, um, as to assist in establishing a baseline for the upcoming workshop and ordinance related to EBO. The actual, we last did a full audit on, um, the minority business office in, um, 2019, the report is, um, audit nineteen oh four, and it was published April twenty-second, 2019, and that report is on the, um, city's, um, internal audit page. This review was a review of chapter twenty-six point five, and the city's compliance with that review. And so I have my first slide up here, I have a couple slides on that as well. And so what we did is we went through the, that ordinance and listed out every area of compliance for the city. We scheduled that out on a spreadsheet, and we sent it out to the major affected departments. Those departments were the equal, um, business opportunity office, purchasing, and contract administration. And what we requested from that management, that, the management staff of each one of those areas was us to give them, for them to give us feedback on if that was in their area of responsibility, what they were doing, um, to obtain compliance and actually, um, give us, uh, some examples. And so when we received that information back from those departments, we reviewed the information, and where, where we needed clarification, we met with the departments, um, to establish what they were doing and whether that, um, was, met the requirements of compliance with, with the, um, ordinance.
Ms. Glover, you said in 2019, there was a completed full audit of the EBO program, 'cause I looked and I didn't see.
See a completed full audit.
Okay, um, the, oh, I, I thought I sent you a copy of that report in the past in, in April.
I don't think it was totally completed, I thought it was, I don't think it was nineteen, it was back a little bit further than that, but I, I didn't see where it was totally completed, that's some of the things I'd asked you about, but go ahead and continue. I just wanna make sure I'm correct, you, um, got the right information on that.
Okay, yeah, we published a report of that department, the minority business office, in April of 2019. Okay, so, um, we selected samples to do testing to make sure, um, we were meeting the elements of code compliance. We looked at items that were sheltered, unsheltered, we looked where discounts were applied, whether discounts were applied, whether goals were set for, for, for participation by underutilized minority categories. And our sample ranged from five hundred and thirty-eight dollars to four point one million dollars. So, um, what we discovered in our review was there were a hundred and twenty-nine points of compliance in that ordinance as written. Twenty-four instances, we were in compliance. That's ninety-six percent of the time, we were in compliance. There were five areas for improvement, and those are listed out on the next slide. Next slide. And these are the five areas, and we have the code reference there. Um, as it relates to dispute resol, resolution, EBO was not communicating to the city attorney or other, or the user department when they received disagreements in writing, they just resolved the issue. And so our recommendation is, um, to be in compliance with the code, they need to, um, ensure the city attorney and the user department receive copies of correspondence involving disagreements. Um, SLBE, shelter procurement, this involves the EBO receiving documentation from the departments when they interact with the, um, SLBE. Um, interactions may be happening, and so our, but there's the documentation, it doesn't necessarily fit the EBO. So our recommendation was that evidence of communication be submitted to EBO or EBO need to make an effort to, um, um, secure for that, um, communication. For construction projects, um, this relates to the code, are in submittal. For construction projects, this relates to the code, are in submission of potential projects by November 15, I think was the date. And in practice, they're not complying with that. They're doing it at the end of the project. So our recommendation was that the significance of the date needs to be reviewed. And then if it's relevant, they need to make that. If not, maybe then it'd be some modification. Because it's not like, it's not being submitted, it's just not being submitted on that November deadline date that's established. On the bid tabulation, the fourth area where there could be some improvement, this ensures support of consistent application of the discount by purchasing. And the bid tabulation forms are not standard. And sometimes there's documentation of the discount and sometimes there's not. So we were recommending that it should include the discount and to make sure that happens, it would be best if they established a standard form. The last area of compliance or non-compliance would have to deal with shelter contracts. And this relates to ensuring the review committee is aware of procurements sheltered by the purchasing director or the EBO manager. And so procurements, our recommendations is procurements under 25,000, those that meet that shelter requirement, it should be submit that to the review committee. And next slide, I think is just questions. But we found 96% compliance in five areas of opportunities to, of improvement. And I'm sorry, the chief of staff, I think he wanted to say something before I got into that, but I jumped right into it when we got there. Chief of staff, are you there?
I am, Christine, thank you. No, I think you've covered everything well. I was just gonna just augment your initial presentation with some of the ways that my office operates to support you. But I think if there's no questions for the sake of time, we can continue.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christine, could you go back up one slide to that list? The one in the middle, 26.5-16. I'm a little confused, you mentioned about a November, a November 8 or something like that. Are construction projects only submitted to SLBE review committee annually? Is that, is that the, is that the point?
It establishes that they should be submitted by a November 15 date, but they're actually being submitted at completion. I have the auditor here that actually did this audit work in case it gets a little far in depth and I'm able to answer. But they are being submitted, but after they completed, not by that established deadline in the ordinance. And we couldn't determine if there's really a significance of that specific November 15 date in the ordinance.
So, and maybe this question is either to you guys or maybe the question is to Brad Baird and Mr. Checkren at the next workshop. But it would seem to me that, that these, especially the major construction projects, should go to the Wimby team long in advance. So they can start massaging it and be proactive out in the community, you know, to try and encourage minority vendors to be involved. But are you saying that this requirement that you reviewed as a, after the contract's over or what? What am I confused about here?
Okay, I have Vivian Walker here, she's auditor, actually worked on that. She's gonna clear that up for us.
Councilman Dingfelder, it is actually in the planning stages of the contract. So what's happening is when a department identifies that there is a project, then it goes through the EBO process. So it's done upfront initially. And the concern is that code says by November 15. The projects are going on throughout the year. And so they always know what's available by November 15.
Okay, so maybe that policy needs to be revised. So it's more of a, you know, instead of an annual thing, maybe it should be revised to say at least six months prior to issuance or something like that. Probably be a better way to deal with it.
Yes, sir. And that's kind of what we're thinking. That's why our recommendation is that they should review the significance of that date and maybe that date is not relevant.
Mr. Bennett, you have any comment on that?
No direct comment, Councilman Dingfelder. Just taking it under advisement from what Christine discovered with her team and then working with OSEA and Mr. Hart's team. I know that there's other reports that have been instituted based on the approval of PIPES. So I want to see how all of these things come together.
I want to compliment Councilman Goode. Thanks for pushing for this additional, this additional audit. It obviously identified a couple of areas of improvement. Thank you, ladies.
Well, Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
I think the point of Dingfelder is when you look at, when we know that we're going to do projects of a significant amount of dollars, you know, that should be thought out well before. And I think that's some of the problem we're having. So hopefully we can implement policies that we know that get things moving beforehand before we do something. And then we have all the stuff we have now, people saying we're not getting opportunities. What I didn't see is that my concern, when I talked to some of, well, people have contacted me about some of the committees in the EBO say that they don't meet. It seems like the committees are not doing any real work or having any real power to do any work. I thought I would see that in that, I didn't. But that's what I'm hearing a lot, that the actual EBO committee, which I've never submitted a name for anybody to be on that committee. I don't much know what the terms are, when they actually, when we vote to put somebody on those boards. Because I'm hearing that you've got the same, same people that are on the board. And again, I heard from one point, they weren't meeting for a long, long time, even before COVID. Maybe now, let me know because we're kind of getting on this process. But I was hoping to see what accountability we have that for that board. Because I don't believe in putting people on boards who are not gonna show up to do the work and making sure you have knowledgeable people on boards to make sure they know the subject matter. So again, I guess that's a question we can get with OSEA, either Mr. Hart, that I want to know when those boards are meeting, who's on those boards and how often are they meeting? I think that's crucial.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, ma'am.
Just in response to Councilman Goode, that's one of the reasons why it's very important when we do a non-audit service. This was requested by the chief of staff and he asked us about the areas of compliance for chapter 26.5. It's very important that we have a clear understanding because a non-audit service is a narrow, limited scope. And why we really like to do an agreement so we can make sure the areas of concern you have are covered in the scope of what we do.
So what we're saying is, I guess we can't do the audit that I requested until the ordinance is in place. And once that ordinance is in place, then we can do the real full audit of some of the areas that we were looking for, correct?
Or if we get a non-audit service, we just need to know what the area of concern is so we make sure we include that in the scope. That could have been something, that could have been included in the scope of a non-audit service, but we just looked at areas of compliance, points of compliance in the code. So that scope was varying out.
Okay, I understand that. That's why I was asking for a complete. But we'll get to that bridge once we implement the new ordinance, once we get there. And then we can ask what we really need and what we really want to make sure we cover all bases. But I thank you for the presentation, Ms. Glover.
Councilman Carlson.
And that's everything.
Your microphone.
If I could real fast, I think what Councilman Goode is asking for is similar conversations I've had, which is that we're asking for objective analysis or expert analysis, which may not be the same as an audit, actually. And I forgot, we were both on the Charter Review Commission. But I think it says we have, does it say audit power or investigative power? Andrew is here too. But I don't know what, maybe that's a separate discussion for another time. We need to figure out what other, under the word that the charter uses, what other tools might we have to get an objective view of something or an expert view of something so that we can get other answers?
It does lean to investigative investigations, the county's gonna ask for investigations, to my recollection.
Councilman Dingfelder, I see your hand.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. One last question. We were speaking earlier with Christine and John Bennett. I wanted to know, in regard to this 40-day review period that I guess became new policy under this administration. And I appreciate the fact that Mayor Castor is obviously very diligent in meeting that within 10 days. But for long-term purposes, you think the mayor and the administration would be amenable to shortening that from 40 days, maybe cutting it in half? You know, something along the lines of 20 calendar days, something like that?
John Bennett, chief of staff. Yes, Councilman Dingfelder. You know, as Christine discussed earlier, timeliness and accountability is critical. Just to give you a little bit of synopsis of what I do, when those hit my desk, I read them thoroughly. I look for what I call the portfolio analysis of, you know, Christine talks about her narrow scope. But we know that there's tendrils that lead to other things that support the confines of the audit. So what I look to do is broaden my side of the equation while it's going through its narrow scope approval. So then I turn over the report, of course, and then the mayor sees it. And as Christine mentioned, I think the two fiscal years today, we're averaging 10 days. So I don't think it's unreasonable to have either 15 working days or the balance of three weeks, which would be about 50% of where we are because we're meeting that timeline already. And again, our goal is to make sure that we're compliant and have a sense of continuous improvement in the organization. So unless Christine objects, I don't know that it's that much of a challenge.
Councilman Dingfelder, you're muted.
I said, we appreciate that. When you guys make a change like that, just send us an email and let us know. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Chairman, this is John Bennett again. Can I make one more comment?
Of course, go ahead, sir.
All right, I just wanted to point out in an uber-technical way that in an attempt to support Councilman Goode's and of course, all of council, by asking Christine to commit to a non-audit service between the motion and today's workshop, trying to get a baseline understanding of ordinance compliance. And again, I know Christine mentioned it and we agree that she had to create a scope of work that would get us to today. So I just want to make two points. One, section 26.5-28 does talk about the Equal Business Opportunity Advisory Committee, which is embedded in the ordinance. Now, whether that hit, you know, the randomizer that Christine used of 129 touchpoints, that can be discussed in a deeper way. But on the flip side, if, and I think the administration has tried to show this collaborative and collegial effort for the time we've been in place, is that anytime council has a request to review something in a smaller scale, like just the rate of attendance or the rate of interaction between one of our advisory groups and the system to see if it's moving. Of course, COVID has thrown a lot of things on its head. But anytime, you know, council has a request to do something, we have no problem running back, doing a quick analysis, writing a memo and sending that through in lieu of maybe adding a non-audit service or additional work to Christine's shop. Because I know that they work hard and they have a good business plan throughout the year. Again, not trying to suppress anything, just trying to be accommodating.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, anything else? Does that complete your presentation for this item number six, Ms. Glover?
Yes, sir, it does.
So we can go into item five?
Yes, sir, thank you.
That will complete the agenda? After that. All right, item number five, we have a PowerPoint, Equal Business Opportunity Program for today's workshop. There it is, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a little delay on our side. So if you hear a pause, we're just waiting to make sure that city council and the community gets to see the graphic at the same time we're speaking to it.
Yes.
So I apologize, I haven't seen it come up yet.
It's up on our screen, it shows the welcome slide.
Okay, well, they can go ahead and advance to the next slide so we can start talking about that. It should be called Equal Business Opportunity Thought Framework.
Yes, sir, we see it.
Okay, great. Well, again, good afternoon, council. We appreciate this opportunity to do very important work today with not only council but with our business partners in the community. I was very humbled by the public comments earlier and grateful for talking to those folks, not only offline throughout the time I've been back, but specifically, you know, Otoba and that group, I've done webinars with them and talked in a visionary way and looking forward to a continuous improvement in our equal business opportunity. That said, I drafted this framework, this slide is actually mine. We've been supported by HNTB as consultants. And part of that was a partnership to work with both OSEA Wim's office in Neighborhood Community Affairs, which oversees our Equal Business Opportunity Program. And in addition, supported by Ms. Jean Duncan and her team as one of the largest customers of that office. And so we were really grateful that they could help boost this effort to get to this motion and this workshop over the holidays. And however, this slide I drafted because I just wanted to share with council that this has kind of been my view from the chief of staff's office, specifically for about the year that this administration has been settled in the organizational chart, which unfortunately, within 30 days of that organization, we started our COVID work. But regardless, what I have noticed, both from a legal aspect, which is to me, the balancing objective of trying to understand your ordinance as it relates to our, not only our vision but our opportunity. On the right side, you see that, you know, trying to be compliant with the ordinance is one of the balancing acts. And then creating as much opportunity in our minority business and small local business and of course, our women-owned businesses as well, is where we find the most challenge. And if you look on the right, you know, the public will demand to have the best cost, the highest quality and the best timing for those projects, especially as relate to construction and infrastructure. And on the left side, and I can tell you, this administration, very well supported by council, hit the ground running on the Bridges to Business efforts to try and improve certifications, to feed that funnel, to make sure that we have the most opportunity possible to increase participation in all of the projects, especially as you approve the pipes project as well. But we also know that we have an opportunity to eliminate barriers. And I think what you're gonna hear today, matter of fact, I know what you're gonna hear today from Mr. OSEA Wim. And that's why we reduced the PowerPoint from the deck that you saw come through as background material from the good work in partnership with our internal team and our consultants by 96%. Because I want to make sure that when we discuss everything, that we give council due amount of time to give us feedback. And so before I continue on this, Chairman, is there any initial comments that council would like to give to the team before we get going so we could maybe shape our feedback to different council thoughts?
Anybody on council? Councilman Goode, councilor.
Well, I mean, after looking at the 64-page presentation, I did make a couple of calls. Some things that I had talked about with the firm, I didn't see in the presentation. Some things that the community had talked about. And today, some came here to talk today, I did not see in the presentation. My thing is, we hired a consulting firm. And I'm sure they're a great firm, but it's like a coach, which I've been a long time. And I'm trying to win a championship. You know, you have coaches who have experience and expertise of offense or defense and special teams. But then sometimes you have experts to where if I'm the coach and I don't really know offense, I gotta go find the experts. Because experience and being an expert are two different things. experience and being an expert are two different things, and sometimes they coagulate together. But I was looking for more expertise in the framework of the presentation of, these are mistakes we are making or the problems we have. I'm the expert to say, this is what you need to do to fix those now, and how we implement them for the solution portion, and now we roll something out. But for me, what I see is a lot of more community talks, a lot of community engagement. I mean, I mean, people have been engaging in this community for a long time, saying the same thing. But when I hear people that come to the podium this morning and actually indicate certain key points that council has been looking for and asking for, they can tell me specific points to get us where we may need to go, but yet I didn't see that all in my presentation that was going to be submitted today. Maybe it has changed since I made those phone calls yesterday. I will wait and see in reference to what the presentation will be presented forthcoming. But I do, after I do finish seeing what hap, what is happening with the presentation, if there's something that I don't see in there, I'm going to probably make a motion to ask for some things to be done. But I think that I'm going to just yield back, look at it, and see what we have at this particular point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bennett, two things, neither of which will come as a surprise. Mr. Goods, I feel very lucky. I actually got, saw 66 pages, not 64 pages. But anyway, but on a serious note, on page 51 and 52, it indicates that we're doing better in 2019 than we did in 2018. I think the BBE, the Black Business Participation, went from 2 million to 4 million, which is good, but what it doesn't say is 2 million or 4 million out of a total of blank. So in other words, you know, out of a total of 100 million, you know, possible, or 50 million, or 200 million, or whatever that number is. So we need the denominator in order to be really impressed, you know, by the improvement. So that's one thing I expect to ask the question on or hear the answer to during the presentation. And then the other part, Mr. Bennett, similarly, is the goal setting on page 53. I like the list of, at the very end, I think it's page 60 or 61 or thereabouts, it speaks about what the improvements are that are going to be projected and made over the next X number of years. And I like the direction those head. But the goal setting on page 53 only speaks to a goal of 4%. And as Mr. Manchesna and some other folks mentioned early in the hearing this morning, you know, the black community represents 25, 26% of the city of Tampa population. We've talked about this on many occasions. The Hispanic community, I'm sure, represents almost the same percentage. And yet, the goal setting for both Hispanic businesses and black businesses is 4%. If that's our goal, then we can pat ourselves on the back and say, hey, we made it, you know, let's go home. Obviously, that's, our goal needs to be, you know, more and more every year until we get to 20% or whatever. So I'd like to hear a little bit about that later on during the presentation. I think that's all, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Hearing none. Mr. Bennett, are you going to go through all 66 slides?
I am not, as the team just chuckled in the background. No, we reduced this just for this reason, to make sure that we had dialogue. The slides from the background was to show you the work that went on between the motion and today's workshop and allow council to go through that and do exactly what Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Goods did today, or to reach out after they digest any more of that material. But specifically, we wanted to get right to what Councilman Goods is asking for.
Okay.
And also answer any other questions about, and again, I go back to that initial graphic, is that there's a lot of complexity to this that we need to work through to create additional opportunity, to feed that funnel, to increase those goals, increase those opportunities, and discuss that through the legal filters of aspirational and strategic goal setting. So with that, I am actually now going to turn it over to Ms. Osea Wynn, who's going to take us to the future.
Thank you very much.
Yes, if you can, yes, this is Osea Wynn, Administrator of the Neighborhood and Community Affairs. And if you can advance to the next slide, please, I would appreciate it. So as Speaker Bennett has said, there is a little bit of a delay, but I will progress on. As you are aware, we've had listening sessions, council with you, with key stakeholders, with organizations and leaders of organizations who you recommended that we talked to as part of this EBO workshop, the preparation phase. And what I will be presenting before you are recommendations that are broken into two parts. One is, will be the immediate actionable opportunities, those steps that we can take now. And then the second would be those steps that we can take in the future, the short, near-term future. But I would like to start by saying that as part of our discussion in the listening session, there were some key takeaways, some key things that we heard, not only then, but from you, council, from day one, when these contracts were not meeting the level of expectations that you were expecting. And those key takeaways were, how do we increase our spend with not only businesses, but particularly black businesses? How do we increase participation? How do we increase our availability? What other networks are forming of partnerships that we can embark upon that will improve our overall EBO goal? And I think that what you will see as we go through these next two slides is that we have put some thought into how we can actually do that. I will start with the first, immediate actionable opportunity. And these are the things that we can control now within the staff, the administration, or with partnership with you, council. And I want to stress that in order for us to get to the next step and move the needle, it will require a partnership, both internally with city council and externally with our organizations, with the TOB and the chambers and all such organizations. So I'll start by, well, before I start, let me just say, if, as we, while we go through the dialogue, if you have any questions, we have a whole team here with expertise from purchasing to EBO to legal, who can engage into the dialogue and the conversation to answer your questions. So the first thing is that we're, an immediate action for us is to increase the shelter market program from 300,000 to 400,000, 100,000, or maybe even 500,000. We have to have that type of dialogue. And this relates to unbundling contracts. Increase the 1993 purchasing threshold bid from 25,000 to 100,000. We can increase our threshold bids for an RFPs that require your approval, city council, from 100,000 to 150,000. We can investigate the creation of bonds or finance program. And I think this was brought before council before with Councilman Dingfelder, he's taken the lead. But we will partner with you to farm out, what does that look like? Is it viable? And how do we do it? We can establish WMBE and SLB goals on the front end of the contracts where practical. And then we can look at aggressively building our ecosystem to improve availability by the recruitment, the certification and support for businesses, by engaging upon mentor-protege programs. This will allow us to partner with those leaders in the community, have those businesses to work with them, to bring them up to a level to where they are able to actively participate on these contracts and bid, and not only bid, but to win the bids. Likewise, we can aggressively enhance the industry stakeholder engagement through our subcontracting opportunities. We will look at this by targeting those businesses. We already know where we're having the gap in these contracts. So we can target those businesses where we can partner the smaller businesses with the larger ones in the industry so that they can learn those key elements that are needed, again, to bid and to win contracts. Ultimately, our goal is to build this business ecosystem. You know, we, I have to refer to what my grandmother would always say, you can't get blood from a ton of. So we can get the businesses to participate in bidding if we're not there. But our goal is to create that ecosystem so that we can have a larger amount of participation and an increased number of opportunities for those companies. We would like to also engage in an external EBO working group. We want to get to the, to the next level, but we, again, we cannot do it alone. We will need those representatives from TOB, the Chamber of Commerce, or any others who you can recommend, that could be, who could, that can partner with us, that can show us and recommend to us those steps that we need to take in order to improve our EBO participation within the city of Tampa. So at this, I will open it up for any questions you may have before we move on to the second page, the second, my second slide, which is the longer-term action plan for our EBO program.
Councilman Goods.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Wynn. I think you heard a lot this morning. We've been here for a long time. And when you look at the RFP, RFQs, sometimes we have these big words that small people sometimes don't understand. The people who have a lot of education sometimes don't understand the verbiage or wording in some of our RFPs. Again, you have to look at culture sometimes, and, you know, you have big businesses who have a lot of specialized attorneys and consultants that can read through these contracts, these RFPs and RFQs to understand verbiages. And I think that's a key component that you must have with the EBO program. People shouldn't have to be waiting, waiting around to find out when a certification program is. It should be laid out for the year. This is when we're doing certification, so people will already know in advance. These are the things that kind of hinder or roadblocks to folks, that they don't have the inside scoop to what's going on. Everyone needs to have the scoop of what's going on with our contracts, how to fill out these RFQs, I mean, how to apply. I think that's a big issue. A lot of folks are doing good in the private sector, minorities are, but when it comes time to government and city government monies and contracts, they don't know all the parameters because they haven't been taught that or haven't had the opportunity to be at the table to learn it, haven't had the opportunity to bring someone to mentor them along for the opportunity. And I think we have to look at those opportunities. You deal with minorities, Hispanics, and black folks, so they can be at the table to understand. I think that's a key component that we're missing as well, having folks understand the process. A lot of times when you understand the process, you can get ahead more. But when you don't understand, because the language is French to you, you don't get ahead and you fall back. I do like the fact, but I don't see on the board, in your presentation, I think on page 30, I believe, as you're dealing with your codes as your black female category. You heard that this morning. I think that's a category that needs to be implemented, because you look at the categories of minority females, you look at white female, but there's no category for black female. It's lumped into black males. So how do you capture that? What I don't see a lot of times, and what was not mentioned in the audit, is the data. How are we capturing all this data for these different groups? How are we capturing the data of the programming? How are we capturing the data of the dollars being spent? I didn't see that in the audit. Maybe that wasn't a code that was, that was given, but I think that's crucial to know where we stand in the data. You know, sometimes data can be misconstrued sometimes, and sometimes you can say, well, the data shows this. But when actually, the actual product doesn't show what the data is showing. Those are areas I think you truly need to look at. And that's why I talk about the expert, the expert. Sometimes you can be, you have experience, but sometimes you have to have the expert to really internalize and look at the wrongs to make things right. You have some good things on the, on the screen right here, but I think there are a few other things that we can, we can look at to enhance it, because you have to have somebody looking at the house. You can have people doing whatever, but if no one's looking at the house, making sure the house is doing right, that's where it goes wrong. So again, those are kind of the points I'm looking at, and I'll continue to listen on with the presentation. And I do have some things at the end that I want to say at the end.
Any other council members? Councilman Vera? Okay. Very good. Continue on, ma'am.
Okay, so, Councilman Goods, to address some of your questions and concerns, if you can advance to the next slide, please. We have already taken a lot of what you were recommending into consideration, Councilman Goods, and that, those considerations will be part of our action plan with the overall action for us to report back to council within three months or so, to present to you an action plan of how we intend on addressing these actual items, these areas. So a couple of those things, and you have within your 67-page report, recommendations, and we pulled out just some of those highlighted recommendations just to cover with you. So we're looking at establishing a city internal EBO working group, and this group will develop this action plan based on these recommendations, the 22 recommendations that's in the, in your PowerPoint presentation, with some short-term, midterm, we don't have any long-term, because we want to get this thing running really quickly, but timelines. And this will give you, Councilman, an opportunity to see that we are in fact serious about this, and we want to show you our commitment to it, just as you are committed to what we are doing. Not, several of those other recommendations out of the 22, we're looking at how do we increase our resources so that we can actually perform internally? That has been a question from a number of you. So we are, we will be looking at outsourcing some of the EBO working functions to a minority consultant to add to the bandwidth and those bottlenecks that we have been experiencing with some of our projects and some of our contracts. In terms of the, making sure that people understand, the business owners or the contractors, small business contractors, understand what we're doing and understand the verbiage and the nomenclature, we will be holding six-month project look-ahead opportunities that will actually walk them through what they can expect, what is the difference between the RFP and the RFQ, what does that even mean? So we will actually have those type of outreach activities to improve the overall process, both internally as well as externally. We will be providing a quarterly report to you, council, so that you will know what projects are on the horizon, and that will give you an opportunity to ask questions even before they become live. It will show the data, give you the information on the data, so that you can actually respond and have your questions to us instead of like they come before council. We feel that oftentimes, we are in a reactive mode, and we want to get from reactive into more proactive. We will have matchmaking events with prime contractors and the WBEs and the SLB. We had a similar type of event within the last quarter that was indeed successful, but we would like to expand upon that so that, again, we can improve the availability and just make everyone aware of what projects are coming down the pipeline. And then we also discuss, and we will And then we also discuss, and we will conduct, um, industry forum that will be head, uh, held by CAD, our Contract Admin Department and Purchasing Department, uh, in advance, in advance of the large projects, again, so that we can, um, make sure that everyone is aware of the opportunities that are, uh, coming down the horizon. So, um, again, the overall list is in the PowerPoint, uh, presentation. And, um, but those are just some of the key ones we just pulled out. Not that these are any more important than the others, but we just want to show you what we're actually, uh, delivering. Uh, if you have any questions, again, we have a team of experts around the table who can actually entertain any of the questions you may have.
Any questions from council at this time? Councilman Dingfeller.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I'll say thank you, uh, obviously a lot of hard work going into this, but they're clearly a worthwhile effort. We appreciate you and your team, Mr. Hart, Spearman, and, and the, and the, uh, outside folks who work on this. Um, I think we're making good progress. Um, I, I, I think it might be helpful to the community, um, to be able to see those twenty-two recommendations so they, so those folks who, you know, who don't necessarily have the PowerPoint might be able to see it. But before you go there, I did have two questions. Um, one was the question I asked earlier, which relates to goal setting. I don't, you know, maybe I misread it, but I, I thought I saw where it said, you know, our, our goal for 2020 was for, for BDE and for, uh, for Hispanic business was four percent each. And I, I, I thought that's very modest, unimpressive goal. Um, you know, how do we make great strides and great, great headway if our goal is so modest and merely, merely, uh, reflects, uh, what we've done this in 2019? So, tell me if I, if I misread that, then, then good. I'll be glad to be told that. And my question relates to the, the woman-owned, uh, business. And, and, and of course, I'm totally enthusiastic about, about women-owned businesses, especially as related to construction where most of our money is. Um, but there's been, anecdotally, there's been accusations that sometimes, uh, a company might be called woman-owned when in fact it's a husband company and they put it in the wife's name. She's, she's the fifty-one percent shareholder, but not really an active part of it, which, uh, gets a little shaky and perhaps on the borderline of fraud. I, I, I'm not accusing anyone in particular, but I, but I, I do hear these stories anecdotally. So, I wondered, do we have any, I, I know some other agencies address this issue. Um, do we have any rules about, you know, that, that sort of shady, uh, reporting, participation? Uh, just, just so, you know, they get into the, uh, into the WIMBE program? And, and if we don't, is it, maybe we need to add that to our list? And if we do, are we enforcing it?
Uh, good afternoon, uh, council. This is Carl Brody. I'm, uh, with the City Attorney's Office, the new City Assistant City Attorney. And I've been tasked with, uh, taking on some legal responsibilities for, uh, Shepard and the EBO program. And the important thing to know about the statistics and the goals that we set is that all of this is really controlled by, uh, Supreme Court case law and case law from the other federal jurisdictions. And pretty consistently, what we're seeing is that the courts consider these types of programs, um, race-conscious programs, which means that they are subject to the Fourteenth Amendment United States Constitution. The result is that in order for these programs to survive, in order for these programs to be approved, they had to satisfy a strict scrutiny standard, which means they had to provide a compelling government interest that's narrowly tailored to achieve that interest. And to, to boil that down, really what they're looking for, and specifically regarding, um, the numbers and the goals that are set, is that they need to see studies, and we provide studies to support our use of these programs. But the studies limit us to requiring that the percentage of those WMB programs that are really, ready, willing, and able to perform the services in a specific industry, so industry by industry, that's the highest number we can, uh, use in terms of setting a goal. So, for example, if, uh, one of the contracts is let for a painting, um, contractor, we look to the community, not to the total overall twenty-five percent demographic of the Tampa Bay area, but we look to the percentage of painters, of, of paying contractors there are in the, um, community. So, if that happens to be ten percent, the maximum goal we can set is ten percent. Uh, if we go over that, the courts have found that, that exceed what they call over-inclusivity, which can result in us not being, uh, uh, us not being successful in, uh, maintaining the program. Similarly, um, if the goal set is, um, the goal has to be set by the specific studies for any other specific in- industry. So, it's going to be industry by industry. It's going to be, um, based specifically on the different racial classifications, black, Hispanic, Asian, Native American, or separately, um, on, um, the, the female category. So, each of those is, is very distinct, very separate, and they have to be, um, consistent in terms of the percentages. Those percentages have to connect directly to that percentage of, um, businesses in the community that are able to do the work that's, um, that's being bid out. So, that's why you'll see some of these numbers come in lower than the twenty-five percent that we have in the community, uh, with the assumption that that's the percentage of black, or if we did Hispanic, whatever that, uh, percentage would be overall in the community. Want to address your next question?
Well, I hear you, and I read, I read Chris in a long time ago. I think you and I are about the same age and so many, same, same number of years practicing law. Um, and I appreciate your explanation, and I, I won't disagree with you as, as an attorney. But from a practical perspective, that's sort of the chicken and the egg. I mean, it's like, how do we make any progress if we say, well, we want, you know, we want there to be, uh, ten percent, uh, you know, uh, black, black or Hispanic, uh, paint, paint, painting companies? But there's only four percent, so, so therefore, you know, that's the best we can, the best we can push for. Um, I mean, I hear what you're saying in regard to the law, but, um, you know, again, it, it, um, I can't help but think that, that there's other communities out there that have figured out, um, ways to set goals, um, that get us to our places and, and.
Right. I think we're.
Maybe you don't even, maybe at the end of the day, I guess you don't even call them goals. Because if you call them goals, then maybe you get in trouble in court, but, uh.
Exactly. And that, and that's one of the things that, um, I think was interesting about what we were talking about earlier today around this table was the difference between setting those goals and, and having a general vision on where you want to go. Having a general vision is fine. Um, now, this general vision doesn't have real teeth. Um, but it's fine to have that general vision. Having the goal is limited, but we can improve the goals. I think some of the folks around here, we, we were talking about different ways to do that. And really, um, consistent with that second slide, outreach and programs like that where we can just increase the number of eligible, ready, willing, and able minority, um, women businesses, that's the way to go. That's the way to, to, to really move forward and to not be subject to any, um, potential legal liabilities.
Mr. Dingfeller. Uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, Mr. Dingfeller, let me, let me chime in on that right quick with him. Because we're always talking about data and data. But where's the data and data at? Number one. Number two, you, you hit it right on the nail. We're not outreachin' to see where these people are in our community. There are a lot of people, a lot of painters, you know, uh, a, a, a lot of people who could do asphalt, concrete. But again, it goes back to us educating to the government system versus the private sector. I see painters every day. I see guys laying mud every day. So, how can we not interacting with those folks to say, well, for our goals, because they're there? So, I think you're right. But you, I, I, I agree with your second point about outreach. But my thing is, where is our, our, our data now, or where those people are at, or, or why don't we have that, uh, captured? So, those are my issues. When you talk about data all the time, where is it? Because when other people, when I look at other places and I contact their city council members or their mayors, and they tell me they found a way to maneuver and make things happen to change their goal settings, then I'm like, well, why can't we do that? So, to me, you know, I hear what we're saying, but other people have best practices in places. We've given other cities, uh, uh, states that have best practices, but yet I didn't see any of them in your book. You know, you refer, you reference St. Pete. How, how do you reference St. Pete as, as compared to us or some other places? So, we gave several Pacific goal, uh, uh, cities and states where it should have been contacted by our consultant firm. They should have saw what their best practices was, and I didn't see that in your packet. So, I'm a little disturbed with that because the consultant firm was told to contact some of these other places for best practices, and that wasn't happening. So, I beg to differ with some of your comments on the first point. Second one, engagement is key. I agree with you on that, sir. Thank you, Mr. Dingfeller.
Did anybody have any response in regard to my WIMBE, my, uh, WIMBE and specifically my woman-owned business concern?
Councilman Dingfeller, this is John Bennett. I, I just, I want to rephrase the question the way I heard it to make sure staff can reply. I think what you're asking is that, um, if somebody registers as a certified, um, women-owned business and, um, if you unpack that or through the certification process, somebody realizes that it's, and I don't know if this is the correct term, but it's, it's somewhat set up as a pass-through system. Is, is, are we looking through that? Is it illegal? Is it not illegal? Is it captured? Is it investigated? Um, and then how do we deal with that?
My first thing we have to ask is, do our rules, do our rules address it? That it, that it, you know, it's a no-no, somebody, that a woman or the partner or whatever needs to be an active participant in that business, uh, not a passive player? Do our rules even say that? If they don't, and the law allows it, uh, um, you know, we should modify our rules to make sure that there's no little game, game-playing in that regard. And, and number two is, if, if once the rules do, if the rules in fact do say that, or once the rules do say that, then we need to enforce. But yeah, John, you got the, you got it in it, and you, 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 you crystallized what I was saying.
Counsel, it's Gregory Hart speaking, manager of the Equal Business Opportunity Office. Uh, to respond to your question regarding, uh, WBEs, uh, the city certification process, as you know, is very extensive. And it is intended to address, uh, fronts and frauds. Uh, and the city of Tampa's program, uh, for that reason, does not engage in reciprocity with many other agencies. We have a very high standard that meets the, um, the best practices and the federal guidelines. And that may in fact be one reason people find it very cumbersome to deal with our certification process, which we are going to work even harder on to make less cumbersome. But that's why, um, uh, it is very involved and extensive to weed out the fraud, the misrepresentation, whether it's a WBE, HBE, BBE. Hope that answers your question, sir.
Well, it, it gets halfway there. Thank you, Greg. So, more directly, do, do our rules specifically say in a WBE context that, that it cannot be a passive ownership? It has to be active?
Yes, it does.
And, and then, and, and how, how do we enforce that? You know, do we get Christine Glover on board to audit, uh, these people? Or, you know, who, who, who goes out and actually checks that out?
We have the authority to, uh, review that with the expertise. We have in-house as well as called upon, uh, the audit department to assist when necessary. And, uh, when evidence is found that misrepresentation or fraud exists, we do immediately decertify, uh, those firms. And, uh, in addition, we make our sister agencies aware. But it's up, it is up to our sister agencies to take action of, um, on their own. Additionally, I will tell you that any time that we are informed by, um, a sister agency or for that fact, a competing entity and, uh, who claims that a company may be practicing some misrepresentation or fraud, we will investigate, uh, that complaint to determine whether there's some validity to it. So, the answer again is, is yes.
Mr. Dingfeller, can I chime in on that, sir?
Yeah, and then let me just say finally, um, I'll see it, I, I think it'd be great if council has the time, and that's up to the chairman, to look at the, uh, the entire list of twenty-two, um, as opposed to just the highlights. But yes, Councilman Gere, I, I yield my time.
You know, I, I, I hear things, but I don't see action. You know, I hear, you know, you asked that question, Mr. Dingfeller, enforcement. Well, who's enforcing it? I don't, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that. I hear it all the time. I mean, when I go and I call other agencies, they tell me how they enforce it. They tell me how they make their calls, how they make sure they investigate who's doing what and how. So, I'm just wondering, Mr. Hart, tell me who's doing the enforcement of our contracts to make sure people are compliant? Not just if somebody calls us on a whim to tell this other, but who's monitoring it all the time, checking, making sure that things are in place and things are in order and no one's trying to circumvent the system? If you can tell me that directly. And how often are we doing that?
First, sir, if, if you're referring to certification, uh, that is done internally and we call upon, as I mentioned, our internal auditor and, and any of the other agencies who may be engaging those companies. Um, and we do desk audits. If, if you, if you're referring to contract compliance in general, uh, we do have, uh, not only an automated system that requires, um, the, the contractor to submit, uh, confirmation of payment from the city, um, uh, uh, Accounting and Finance Department, and that's, they interface with our Oracle and B2G system. Uh, that automatically lets us know that they've been paid. And then we investigate, um, whether or not our subs have been paid, uh, because the subs then enter into the system whether they have been paid. We also send surveys out to our subs, and we actually, uh, contact our subs in, in suspect cases to validate whether or not what the prime is telling us and the sub is telling us is correct. So, to, uh, ensure that, that the subs are being honest as well. Sometimes subs are under pressure perhaps to, um, uh, kind of, I, I guess shade, um, uh, the, 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 the truth, if you will, or the timeliness of their payments. So, there's not only automated, but there are internal, uh, hands-on, uh, desk audit, uh, processes that are engaged to ensure compliance.
Mr. Hart, I'm not disputing, I, 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 I hear what you're saying. I'm not disputing this, sir, but I, I just, in, in my mind, my keen police mind, I don't think there's the enforcement. As when I talk to folks at the airport, the way they do their enforcement, I don't think we enforce the way they enforce, sir. Uh, I mean, they, they are very thorough out there. They make sure people dot their i's and t's before they even get there. And they're checking the balances throughout the whole process. And, uh, I, I just, I don't think we have that level, maybe, because I don't think we have that kind of staff to do that. But I think, you know, I, I always look at best practices, and I keep hinting on that. You know, we, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can look at what other people are doing to keep the wheel going. So, I, I, I'll yield back. Thank you, Mr. Dingfeller, for your time, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson, you had your hand up.
Miss, uh, Joe Robinson this morning, um, mentioned that, I forgot, well, there's one or one and a half million dollars in business that his company supposedly had, and he said he doesn't have anywhere near that. Are, are, are those numbers accurate? And why would that be? And i- is that being counted toward our MBE numbers or, or not?
Chairman, this is John Bennett. We heard half of the question, uh.
Miss, uh, this morning, Joe Robinson, um, showed, uh, I think a screenshot from the website that showed, I think it was that his company had either a million or a million and a half dollars in business with the city. And he said, I don't have anywhere near that much. And the question is, is that, is that accurate, that that's there? Why is it there? And is that one and a half million dollars being counted toward MBE or not?
Gregory Hart speaking again. Yes, we, 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 we saw that, um, uh, reference that Mr. Robinson made, and, uh, we're going to double-check that. But I believe part of the miss, um, information or misinterpretation was that the one million, uh, was associated with the prime contract value and that Mr. Robinson's. and that Mr. Robinson's sub-consultant or subcontract value was significantly less than that. Without looking into it further, that's just my assumption based on what was stated and what I looked at. However, it could be a data entry error oversight between participating prime contractor and the city. So we'll look into that.
Yeah, I think my colleagues and Chief Bennett and Gene Duncan and others know that I have concerns about accuracy. You know, we pushed back an intern at the city, asked some questions from the EDC about the accuracy of their information. They came back to us with four pages, single-spaced of changes that they made because they made errors. And now they're not even sending reports to us, so we don't even know what they're doing. And they're going to ask us for funding against next summer. The water department is asking us for $10 million and then $400 million. And in the, then the fact sheet that they sent to city council and the public, I disputed at least half of the comments. And even, I mean, some of it, they say, is open interpretation. But one of them was, when is the SWF MUD permit going to be up for renewal? And when I asked the question a week later, I still don't have an accurate answer. I know what the answer is, and the answer that was in the fact sheet was a year and a half off. And I think this is indicative of a change in culture. And I think what happened is that the last mayor, last administration, just was not paying attention. And I think that there were a lot of departments that were not run professionally. And everybody, my colleagues will say this is a political attack. But the idea is that this is what we're facing. We're facing a situation where the city was not professionally run. There were, there were problems in lots of departments. And the mayor and chief of staff have gone through and changed management. And there are areas of the city I still don't have confidence in. And this is an area that the community is complaining about. We see that other government agencies are able to run it correctly. We see that other water departments are able to give accurate information to the city council members. And how can we even have staff members who, in a city, in a city government that don't give accurate information to elected officials and the public? That's not something we should stand for. The bottom line is that the public wants results on this. And if other government agencies can get it, we should be able to get it. And whether not hitting these goals was intentional or incompetence from the last administration, we need to make sure we change this culture fast. It's been two years, and the mayor and all of us are going to be up for reelection in a year or so. And we're going to be held accountable for the numbers that are under our watch. And we need to make sure that these numbers are accurate. We need to change the culture as fast as possible. We need to get these processes in place. And I know that Mr. Bennett and Ernest is trying to change this. But it's deep-seated. It goes from helping to build entrepreneurship among women and minority-owned communities and businesses to making sure that they have the right information. I mean, we know that, and I'm shocked that an audit has never been fully done. We know that a huge number of contracts that came before us when we first started were single-bid contracts. And apparently, that was, that was the regular way of doing business in the last administration. And it's disgusting that that kind of thing occurred. And we insisted that it stop, and this administration has worked with us to make it change. But it's really sad that we have to make all these deep changes. And this is something that we really need to do. I'll just say one other thing and be quiet. Mr. Ransom, you know, Toba, the Saturday Morning Men's Group, others have spoken to us this morning. I really wish that you all would sit down with them. They're not happy. They were not happy yesterday when they read the documents. They're not happy today. I know you all met with them before, but please sit down with them and talk to them, and let's figure out how to fix this. We're not hitting the numbers. And I don't want to have to turn down, I don't want to have to be one of the votes that turns down a multimillion-dollar contract because our behind-the-scenes processes are not, are not good. I think we need to help the community and do the things that we say we're going to do. Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilman Viera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate everybody's comments on this. You know, I think our, the message that we're trying to send, that everybody's trying to send is that we want to use only legal mechanisms that we can to increase pluralism and diversity in contracts. But every legal mechanism that we have, and you know, when we look at other similarly situated cities and municipalities that apparently have better numbers on these issues, you know, questions are going to be asked. But obviously, you know, given the direction of courts with regards to things that public entities can do with regards to diversity and things like recruitment contracts, et cetera, with application of strict scrutiny to such racially conscious policies, it does handicap us just a little bit, but not so much that, you know, these kind of numbers should be taken as not the new normal, but accepting the old normal as the new normal. And it clearly shouldn't be that way. You know, something I'd love to see with entities that do work with the City of Tampa is some sort of a report card on their diversity numbers. For example, a lot of times we get, you know, I'm an attorney. And, you know, a lot of times, as part of, when I was at a firm for a really long time, we tried to bid on contracts for, you know, big corporations. And we get asked questions, some of the questions we'd get asked sometimes for some of the more socially conscious corporations or entities would be, you know, how many women do you have as partners, whether equity or non-equity? How many racial or ethnic minorities do you have as partners, whether equity or non-equity? How many veterans? You know, what's your work in the community, et cetera, et cetera? I'd love to see that. I'd love to see that when, you know, someone applies to, you know, renew a contract with the City of Tampa, for example, that we can see what their diversity record is as a law firm, as a business, as an economic entity, et cetera. I think that we ought to have things like that. You know, we've talked about contracts that come up before. Sometimes we have some disputes in them. Sometimes they pass five to two, four to three. Sometimes they go down seven to zero because of a lack of seeing the numbers that we all want on there. I think all seven of us agree with the position of, please don't put us in a position to have a contract on something that is of critical importance to the public, but that comes out with numbers on diversity that put us all to shame. So what we're trying to do is, is to prevent those sort of conflicts because none of us want them, because all of us want to see contracts that are done in an equitable way, that cast a big net, and that wind up having great results. You know, part of it is with the tools that we have under strict scrutiny is that we have to cast a very wide net. We have to make sure that we cast a wide net going out among stakeholders and letting folks know of the different opportunities that exist. And that's incumbent upon all of us. I, and I know, you know, with COVID now, we're limited on what we can do, et cetera. But I think all of us should be involved in making sure that we tell the different stakeholders in the community the different opportunities that exist with regards to contracting, et cetera. So there's a lot of issues here. But I think the message is that while we're going to only use the tools that are legally available to us, and those tools have, you know, kind of gotten shortened over the last 20 years, unfortunately, in my opinion. But we want to make sure that we use all of the legal tools because if there's other cities that are operating under the very same law that we're operating under that are doing better, then we ought to look to that. And I think that's what today's about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, it's Gregory Hart speaking. May I offer some comments? Thank you, sir. I'd like, I'd like to ask, if we have a national expert on the line, Colette Holton Associates, and I'm hoping she's still on the call with us.
Yes, I'm here.
I would like to ask you to just briefly address the interest in doing a comparative analysis of programs and benchmarking, and how we might go about doing that, if it's practical.
Sure, and thanks for...
Can we turn the volume up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you not hear me very well?
I think it's on all right. Mr. Hart faded away a little bit, and it's hard to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've had some trouble hearing someone speak. Okay, well, you all can hear me. If I understood the question correctly, it was sort of the inability of trying to benchmark against other cities. And there's nothing wrong with doing that. And certainly, a full diagnostic kind of review that it sounds like many of your council members are interested in, the community is interested in, would be something that would probably be useful. Just sort of one word of caution about looking at other people's programs. And the first one is that you really do have to make sure that you are comparing comparable data sets. I've been involved with these programs for over 30 years now, and we have worked for agencies all across the country. And people report often very differently. So if you are going to try to look to some other jurisdictions, just make sure that the data that you're looking at is really comparable to your own. So for example, really, an awful lot of agencies aren't reporting anything about subcontractor utilization. So they may have the direct prime payments that they made, that they know who those contractors are. But if they're not collecting full and accurate subcontractor information, and you are, that may not provide you with a good benchmark. Certainly, I think from a legal standpoint, and I've been a practicing public contracts lawyer for 35 years now, that the USDOT disadvantaged business enterprise program regulations certainly are something to benchmark against, both because they are national in scope, but also because every court that has heard a challenge to the DBE program regulations has found them to be facially constitutional. So when we're advising a local agency like Tampa, we always suggest that they sort of hold up their program against what the regulations say at 49 CFR Part 26, just to kind of get a look to see, you know, how close you are. And modeling your program to some extent after the DBE program was a major reason why we were able to recently successfully defend the Illinois tollway program, which although it is a highway unit of government, does not get any money from the feds. It's all totally funded off the toll. And the court said that one of the things that it looked to as indicia of the constitutionality of the program was how closely it hews to the DBE program. So that might be a benchmark that would be useful. I think the other thing to kind of maybe focus on a bit is, what can you do? And I think I've heard someone mentioning this as well. What can you do to increase the capacity of these firms? As your city attorney explained, the courts are extraordinarily hostile to these programs. And whatever I might have thought before, I am really quite convinced now that the current makeup of the Supreme Court could well strike down affirmative action, period, regardless of what kind of data you have. And so, of course, it is in fact correct that general population, according to the courts, is irrelevant. You could have a city that was 80% black, but you're not going to be able to support an 80% goal. It really is the percentage of all firms that are owned by women and minorities that are ready, willing, and able in your market to provide what you purchase. So that's always a much smaller group than population, sad to say. So focusing on capacity-building programs, I think, is critical. I was very interested to see some of the recommendations that came out of HNTB review. And, you know, many of them are things we know how to do. We have a pretty good idea now what a good bonding support program will look like, what type of men or protege programs actually work, you know, that are below, you know, sort of beyond, let's just go to lunch and give you a plaque at the end of it. You know, what really helps minority firms to grow and thrive. And certainly, your emphasis in your program, from what I've been able to see on prime contract awards is important, and you really should be commended for that because too often, these are seen as subcontracting programs. And that's fine for firms that are at that level. But many minority firms across the country, and I've interviewed easily 2,000 people over the last several years, consistently tell me that they want to be primed, especially outside of construction, professional services, you know, law firms, accounting, financial services. Those people don't run on a prime sub-model outside of a program. And so for them to really succeed, your focus on prime awards, I think, is very important. And that might be someplace that you'd like to put some more attention. But in answer to Mr. Hart's specific question about benchmarking, there's nothing wrong with doing that, you know, just be careful. I can tell you, there is no magic bullet out here. There's no jurisdiction that, you know, so to speak, knocking out of the park or doing great. These problems are entrenched. They are systemic. And they really reflect the overall systemic racism that we see throughout the entire society. And the City of Tampa is not going to be a magic bullet for anybody. That doesn't mean that you can't do more and you can't do better. But, you know, I would say, you know, don't criticize yourselves overly or beat yourselves up too much because nobody has figured out some way to suddenly create a whole bunch of solid, successful black businesses, given all of the headwinds that are out there in the economy that you don't control. So that might have been a little further than Greg was really asking, but anyway.
Carlson.
Thank you, Colette. Much appreciated.
Could I ask the consultant a quick question? One of the, one of the arguments by the community is that the African-American population is plus or minus 26%, but our percentage of African-American businesses in the city is very low. I wonder, just asking the consultant, as you've looked at other cities, you probably are looking at a percentage overall of MBE. But do you ever see how it correlates with the percentage of minorities in the community?
If I understand your question, you're asking whether or not we take a look at the specific racial groups? And their...
So if the percentage of African-Americans in a city is 26%, how does that correlate with what the best cities get in terms of African-American business participation in the city business? Is there a correlation there?
Okay. No, I mean, sad to say, not really. How should I say this? Population from a legal standpoint, well, from the law and the federal courts have given it to us. I've been a lawyer long enough to watch the constant constriction of the ability to do anything about these issues over, you know, the last 25 years, probably. So, you know, the law is whatever the Supreme Court told us it was. But within that framework, you know, probably about the best you ever see is availability in the business population at about 50% of population. That's kind of a rule of thumb that's way too strong. But we often see that. So you might have a community that's, you know, 40% black and Latino, let's say. And then you might expect availability to be about 20%. So the idea that we have a certain number of individuals in the community the courts have told us is just irrelevant, literally irrelevant, to the question of whether or not the city can set a goal. And Mr. Brody, I see?
I wonder, just as a final comment and request, if the administration could consider having the consultant speak to some of the folks that spoke this morning, in particular, Toba and the Saturday Morning Men's Group, to listen to their concerns, and maybe, maybe the consultant could help interpret the gap there. I know that Jean's nodding, and Chief Bennett is there. I know you all are working hard, and others are working hard to try to fix this. So anything we could do to close the gap would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Jim?
Councilman Gudz.
One thing I didn't mention that I need to mention. You know, I look at a lot of these prime contractors, and the consultant talked about primes. You know, a lot of companies have come here and set up shop here in Tampa that are from out of state. And now they've got a pilot shop here in town. We can't be afraid to look at those minority primes from other states who want to come here to do business and set up shop as well. I know we've always been familiar with this particular company, or those couple of companies, and we continue to give them work. But it has to come a time that we have to let others into the city as well. So I'm hoping that we are going to be looking at that dialogue as well, making sure that we're giving opportunities to other prime minority vendors from other states who can come here, set up shop, leave that money here to hire workers here. I think we got to, we have to look at those things. We can't keep going to the same companies over and over and over. We've got to get some new, what I call, new blood in the city as well, so we can prosper, so everyone can prosper. So I'm hoping that we also have that on the bucket list as well. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, this is John. I'd just like to, if it's a closing comment, unless counsel has something else.
Go ahead, sir.
So I just want to wrap up first. I want to thank everybody that's worked hard on this. I want to thank counsel for bringing it and making it a priority for the community. I just want to say, and I know I'm echoing and rephrasing things that have been said by counsel, but we're not going to rationalize failure in this administration. It's just not in our DNA. It's not going to happen. When things come across my desk, I talk to Mr. Spearman, Mr. Hart, Oseya, Jean, Brad, Sal. We're going to tear things apart. We're going to unbundle things. We're going to do whatever it takes. We're going to change the culture of the organization to, if we have to manage two contracts, we're going to manage two contracts. If you have to manage three, we're going to manage three. The mayor has made this a priority. She started out with the Bridges... She started out with the bridges to business. She went door to door and handed out thousands of dollars of checks during the COVID to make sure that these businesses could stay afloat, both in East Tampa, West Tampa, North Tampa, and South Tampa. And with your support in the budget and modifying some of these recommendations that Osia's brought to your attention, creating the quality assurance, and to all of the data-driven comments, that's exactly why we're going to an open gov platform, to make sure that all the metrics can be visible to the public in a very consumable way. To Councilman Dingfelder's comment about where's the denominator, that's exactly what, um, I'm working with, with T N I, as well as, um, Dennis O'Hara's office on the budget, so the public can actually see these things in an immediate, transparent way, and we can make sure that if there is, um, any questionable data, uh, which is exactly why Mayor Castor, supported by your budget approval, added an F T E to Christine Shop to do the data-driven analysis, uh, for the organization. So we are one hundred percent committing to moving the needle on this without rationalizing failure and stretching every bit of this law with Gina Shop as possible. So we are far from done, and I'm very confident with this team that we're going to get it there and, uh, and bring it back to you in a very successful way.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goode, I believe you had a, you had a motion?
You know, let, let me just say, let, let me thank the administration for, for at least opening this door, for the conversation, the dialogue, and trying to move forward. I have to say thank you to the chief of staff. I've worked with him a long time, and I know he's the kind of guy, he doesn't mess around, he wants results. You know, we have that old police mentality. We, we're not used to just waiting around for things to happen, we go make it happen, uh, and we make it happen quickly. Um, you know, again, I appreciate the, the, the external hire for the consultant to go do some work, some research. Uh, I appreciate Ms. Osia, Ms. Spearman, Jean, everyone to, to work together on this. Uh, but I, I know that we're still missing a few things. I, I, I'm hoping that we're going to get there sooner, very, very sooner than later. Uh, but this evening, uh, I, I need to make a motion, because again, I'm the African American counsel for the district. So anything that doesn't seem right, I get it, and I get it three times more than some of my other colleagues. Uh, but what I want to do, Mr. Chairman, is put a motion on the floor. I think you all have received a letter from the Tampa Association of Black Affairs, Toba, addresses some of their recommendations. Uh, I'd like to make a motion, the staff, administration, look at the recommendations that they have put forward, and when they come back with their recommendations, uh, give us an input on some of the recommendations that Toba has put forward. Yeah, I can hear that.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode. We have a second from Councilman Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're opposed, Councilman Dingfelder, you have a question?
No, I'm not opposed. I had a, a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, no, Councilman Goode, I appreciate your comments and, and the leadership on this, and, and, uh, and I think you're, you're right on. Um, appreciate, uh, Toba and James Ransom and his crew in regard to, um, staying on this for, for decades, really. And, uh, and John Bennett, as you say, we've got to keep pushing the needle and moving the ball forward, and I do believe that we'll all get there. Um, to Greg's and, and to Jean on occasionally, uh, uh, you, you guys know I love you, and, um, and, and we all have the same goal in mind. Um, so I, I apologize if I can be hard sometimes, but, uh, but, but you know where my heart is. Um, but in regard to these, these items, um, so what's the plan in terms of coming, coming back, John, with updates and that sort of thing? Osia, um, you're, 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 you're the leader of this, of this now, so, uh, what's, where, what's the future breakfast?
So, Councilman Dingfelder, if council approves, uh, we will like to come back before you in May, uh, with our list of recommendations of, and within our action plan, so that, um, you can see the progress we've made, and we would like to report at that time with the immediate actionable opportunities, where we are on those, um, with those recommendations as well. So two fo- folds. First, looking at the actionable opportunities, uh, the increasing of thresholds and shelter markets and all of that, and then the second is that the, providing a list of, uh, actions for those twenty-two recommendations.
Well, I made that motion, uh, probably, and, um, that you come back, uh, you have a date in May, or, or just first, first regular meeting in May?
First regular meeting in May will be fine, yes.
Okay. And, and I, I'd like to add to that, um, unless there is any objection, um, that I, I think, I think, uh, twice a year update on, you know, on all of this, uh, unless that's already duplicative of something we're already doing, which sometimes I can't remember. But, um, but anyway, I, I was, you know, definitely May, uh, would be my motion, first regular meeting in May, and, and maybe twice a year thereafter. Um, unless, like I say, John, unless we're already doing that, I can't remember.
First regular meeting in May?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman.
May is, uh, May sixth.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Dingfelder and Chairman. Uh, if I could make a, an offering, a recommendation, that, uh, council has already requested a, um, a biannual report on the pipes program as it related to, uh, E B O efforts, would it be council's pleasure to co-mingle the remaining data with that?
I, I think that'd be, that makes a lot of sense. So why don't we just, uh, make that an overall biannual, biannual, uh, E B O report, including pipes?
I may have said that wrong, maybe it's a semi-annual, I apologize.
Yeah, well, if you said it wrong, I just copied you, so, um, anyway, so let's, let's be simple, twice a year.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's my motion, uh, first, first meeting in May and, and a, a twice a year report, uh, on all E B O efforts, including pipes.
All right, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that I can create a clarification on Councilmember Dingfelder's motion?
Councilman Dingfelder, can you clarify the motion for the clerk?
I can restate, I can restate the motion. Um, the motion is that, um, uh, staff will return to us the first meeting in, in May, uh, with an update on the E B O plan, and thereafter, staff will provide, uh, a report twice a year, uh, on E B O activities, including pipes.
Did you get it, ma'am? All righty. You're all set. Anything else? Chief Bennett? No?
No, thank you, Chairman. I appreciate council's feedback, and we're looking forward to working together, not only with council, but with the, uh, public comment group, the task force, the, the equal business opportunity advisory council, uh, looking forward to a great journey to make Tampa number one in this space.
Very good. Thank you very much. That then concludes the agenda. So we're going to take it to, uh, new business, uh, from council members. I'll start with Councilman Dingfelder. Are you, do you have anything for new business, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. A minor, um, a minor issue, um, a while back, we noted that after the council long ago tied its own hands as related to chapter twenty-seven amendments, um, and we tied our hands and said, for some reason, the ordinance now says, um, uh, you know, that we can only do that twice a year, without any exception. Um, and so we talked about it, staff says they reported to us in October and gave us the reasons why they, they think it should remain the status quo. I sort of, I must have missed that, I, I don't know, it slipped by me, um, but I want to bring it back up, because I don't think we should limit ourselves to that twice a year thing. Sometimes when neighborhoods come to us, and they have an issue, or the community, or the, even the business community comes to us, and they have an issue, and they want a response, and they want a quick response, and they don't want to wait, you know, six months or whatever for the next cycle. So with that, um, I would, I would ask, uh, legal staff to return to us, um, I'll say, um, the, the end of March, uh, at a regular meeting, uh, with a, with a draft ordinance that modifies that chapter twenty, and I don't have the specific subsection, I apologize, but that specific subsection that limits us twice a year.
Councilman Dingfelder, we have a March eighteenth regular meeting, but then we have an April first regular meeting. Would you mind doing April first? Or you're happy with March eighteenth?
April Fool's Day always works for me, that's fine.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
See y'all tonight.
Five oh one P M. Councilman Viera, do you have anything, sir?
Uh, just a really quick number. Uh, I, I, I motion for a city council commendation to be presented to miracles of outreach in August for their twentieth anniversary. They'll, uh, provide homes for assistance for victims of human trafficking. To be provided, a date to be determined.
Very good. We have a motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. I motion for a letter to the Florida delegation urging support for the National Apprenticeship Act of two thousand twenty-one, House H R four-four-seven, which passed the House in the last Congress, and is being championed by our wonderful, uh, Congresswoman and the fighter for working families in Tampa, Kathy Castor.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, with the second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And, and then last, again, I'm going to maintain again what I said before, which is, um, that, that for tonight, for quasi-judicials, after midnight, Mahomeno, more or less, just at, there, there comes a time when, uh, we shouldn't be doing quasi-judicials. So, don't, don't get me wrong, if it's one o'clock and we're still here, God love it, that's fine, but in other words, just to move by with all deliberate speed. That's what I would say. Thank you.
You have, you have my word. I'm, I'm the quiet one. I'm the Ringo Starr of the group. I don't, I'm short, I'm short, and I don't talk. No, I wish. Anything else, sir? Councilman Citro.
Uh, Mr. Chair, noth- nothing to come before right now, but I'd like to publicly thank Ms. Martha Beala for this wonderful cup. It commemorates the service that her brothers gave to our, to our country in their military s- uh, service. Martha, thank you very much, I will cherish, treasure it always. Nothing more, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Goode?
Next, Mr..
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, first thing, I've got a couple.
Uh-oh.
Um, one is I have a conflict form from January twenty-first. I'd like to receive and file. We need a vote on it?
It'll be part of the receiving file.
Okay.
That the file has, excuse me, the original has been filed with the clerk, Mr. Carlson.
Okay, thank you. And then second, um, we, as we said earlier, we got, um, flooded with, uh, emails the last few days about parking situation. Um, a, a week or two ago, you all moved, uh, uh, the toilet tap two-point-oh discussion to next week. Um, I would like to avoid having a whole bunch of, uh, emails between now and then. Uh, nothing's changed since then, uh, nobody in the community that I know of has been reached out to. Uh, there was a meeting, um, a high, a high-level meeting, but, um, with the mayor and, and other key officials, but nothing substantive has, has happened. There's been no communication process with the public. If we don't reschedule it, we're going to get flooded with emails again, and that's fine, we can do that, but we're going to sit through, you know, a couple hours of public comment next week, and we've got other big issues that we need to address on that day. Uh, what I would recommend, I'd like to make a motion, okay if you all shoot me down, but just to avoid all of that, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll whip up and then we'll have to reschedule anyway, I think. But what I would, uh, like to do is make a motion that we reschedule, uh, that, um, pure discussion until May sixth, um, and between now and then, ask the water department to do a, um, an objective alternatives analysis and, uh, have a robust, um, communication, public outreach process, and report back to city council as to, uh, the, the findings of the, of the analysis and the feedback from the public.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Do we have a second?
And I'll, I'll, I mean, to just to give my, it's very uncustomary for, um, and I always appreciate Councilman Carlson, um, uh, putting this out there, because, uh, it, it's something to, you know, put something out there and go, I may not get a second, so I, I, I appreciate that. My, my thoughts on that are, Councilman, that when it comes to us next week, if the, um, outreach that we directed the administration to do has not been done, you know, then we can move forward with it. I just wanted to explain my not seconding, because that, that's, that's, that's rare, so, just to give you my thoughts.
Thank you. I just think we're going to get a lot of, a lot of feedback. It's going to be unnecessary whip-up of the community, uh, because they have other things to deal with, but, um...
Do we, do we have a second on this?
It doesn't sound like it.
I'll second it, if I can hand the gavel to Citro, but I don't, I don't think it's going to go anywhere, so...
I'll take the gavel, thank you, Mr.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm sorry, Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney. I was just hoping, I, I believe there's still some staff on the line. My understanding originally was there was some deadline by which this needed to happen, and so before you go forward, I just want, would ask that you make sure that continuing it to May sixth doesn't create any problem.
Yeah, and, and I can, I could say, please, there was a memo that was sent by, uh, water staff, which has a page of fa- supposed facts on it, and one of the simple facts was that they said that the SWIFT MUD permit was going to run out in twenty-twenty-three, and SWIFT MUD says it's December, I think, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. And, uh, and I still haven't gotten a straight answer from the water department, and in the, and I can go through the rest of it and dispute. Uh, the two reasons they give are number that we need to hurry. One is that, um, the state may pass this law, uh, that will, will force us to do it, and there's questions about why is the city lobbying to cost us four hundred million dollars plus? But the, this, and then the second thing is if that goes through, that SWIFT MUD, the SWIFT MUD money may not be available. Uh, the folks I've talked to in and around SWIFT MUD says there's no, there's no reason to hurry, May is fine. Um, if, if the legislature hits us with this, then we can address it at that point, and we can look at the options in a fair way, and we can, uh, look for money from SWIFT MUD and other agencies. It's not, the money's not going to disappear, but I'm curious to see what the water department will say.
Yes.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair. And this is something that would actually support, to a degree, moving, and again, I'm not going to vote for this, but, um, one of our members, who to me is Mr. Water, uh, Charlie Miranda, may not be here, uh, next week. He sits on, on Tampa Bay Water, just, you know, um, uh, something that, that supports, again, I'm, I'm respectfully not going to vote for this, but just a thought, which is, you know, just putting that out there for whatever it's worth.
All right, if there's staff on the, the line, is there any, uh, issue with, should this pass with postponing it to, uh, May sixth?
Chairman, this is John Bennett. Can you, can you rephrase the requested motion? There was some feedback.
The motion was, um, instead of having the, uh, peer discussion next Thursday, Councilman Carlson has requested that it be continued until May sixth, uh, per some of his, uh, concerns, and the question is, uh, with, with you on the line and other staff, if the pure discussion is postponed until May sixth, does that affect any deadlines or put us in any kind of limbo or jeopardy?
Chairman and counsel, uh, again, John Bennett, without the support of Jean Duncan's office, I would say that it, uh, it's my understanding that it, it does put some timelines in jeopardy, the way I've been told, and I know staff has worked diligently with partners, uh, to bring back a, a modified approach. I believe the memo is hitting your inbox now, um, that, that really worked with the partners to right-size this request. Um, I think I heard Councilman Viera's comment about, um, uh, Mr. or Councilman Miranda, and of course, our, our, our wishes and thoughts are with him, of whether he'll be available on the fourth, as Mr. Water as well. Um, but I, it, it would be my request to keep it on the fourth, and then if for some reason, uh, between now and the fourth, we need to continue it to the eighteenth, uh, but I'm, I'm very concerned about May, based on what I know right now.
Okay, we have, uh, Jan McLean is here. Uh, can you answer the question on whether this would affect any deadlines or throw anything, uh, in, into, uh, limbo?
Oh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Um, Jan, Jan McLean with the Office of City Attorney. Um, yes, in a, in a word, if we delayed the presentation and any action by city council until May, there is the consideration of the, um, Southwest Flotter Water Management District and our pending application in front of it. They will be taking action on February the eleventh, and, um, I am not certain, but I know that they will be making a decision again in April, and then final decisions in June. So we, is my understanding of their schedule. Sorry, still breathing. Yes, sir.
I, I, what I would recommend is that, uh, the water department brings somebody from SWIFT MUD to state this, because the conversations I've had are otherwise, and, uh, what's going to happen next week is that, uh, we're going to have a whole bunch of people from the community disputing the facts of what the water department is saying. disputing the facts of what the Water Department is saying, and I don't really want to go there. You know, Charlie Miranda said last time, if somebody didn't tell the truth to the city council, he would demand that they get fired, and I'm really concerned that we are getting so much misinformation, and you all may think it's political that I have some other agenda. I don't. I don't like not being told the truth. I don't like being told that a permit's going to run out in 2023 when it's going to run out at the end of 2024, and I can go through the whole rest of the list and show you all how the facts that we were given are not true, and we should be really concerned. $10 million is a lot of money, $400 million is a huge amount of money, and there are lots of concerns from the public. There's no way we're going to know the answers by next week.
Actually, sir, if I could ask you, you dispute the calendar that I just set out for you as far as February 11 and May. Do you have the other dates?
The folks that I've spoken to in and around SWIFTMUD say there's no urgency. There may be dates that are scheduled where they're going to be approving things, but there's no urgency, there's not going to be a shortage of money, and could you just tell us, in the bill that the legislature is pushing forward, by what deadline would we have to at least start a cure for this?
We would have to submit a plan to eliminate our, eliminate or heavily restrict our discharge by November of '21 this year, so that we would have to have certain projects online to accommodate for the DEP to review that plan, and then once and if they approve that plan, we would have between five and, five and seven years before we would have to have it done. I would like to go back to the SWIFTMUD question, though. Whether there is or there isn't sufficient money is not the, is not the issue. They have a schedule that we have to meet, and if we don't have our ducks in a row, if we don't have our application complete, if we don't have the.
So, do you think that we could have somebody from SWIFTMUD here to say that?
I don't know. We can certainly ask.
Because at this point, I don't trust, honestly, I don't trust most of what is coming from the Water Department. If you all want, I can bring, I can bring experts next week who will, who will show that the information being presented is not true. I requested all of you, you think I would put my reputation on the line to get this angry about this? The fact that I had to go back and forth that the information we're given is not accurate and not exactly accurate is really disturbing, and we know that, I mean, what it brings up is it makes me question all the other multimillion-dollar projects. We approved $2.9 billion in projects, and should we be asking the same questions about all the others? Go back and look at those, I can forward you all the emails where I went back and forth with the Water Department if you want. I haven't because of sunshine, but we can bring a whole bunch of experts here. Unfortunately, it's going to take hours and hours to debate this. It's not just going to be me. There are lots of people in the community who are going to debate it.
Well, I would just like to stick with what you had asked me, which was the schedule and what we are submitting to SWIFTMUD. Also, I'm here as a licensed practicing attorney, so I don't, wouldn't put out misrepresentation or untruths to you. Whether I would make a mistake on a year or two as far as an application, I will be glad to.
And the memo, the memo that I was given, I don't think came from you, so I was not criticizing you in that.
But I'm standing here telling you what the dates are, and I don't want to get into an argument with you, but I would certainly get the schedule from SWIFTMUD. If we can't have somebody here, I will have something sent to me, and we can present it to you.
What I, what I would like to see, though, is that there's a fine, in the information we're being presented, there's a fine line between what's true and, and what's necessary. So, yes, there may be certain dates scheduled, but the question is, is that, is that the deadline within which we have to operate, or can that deadline be extended? What actually is SWIFTMUD's deadline within which we have to work? That's the question, not when their meetings are.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, and I know it's frustrating, but Mr. Carlson does have one point here. If
there are multiple dates that these applications can be filed, what is the last date? If it's May, is it, you know, is it, you know, March, when is it? So, if he's asking to say, okay, we've got a multitude of people may want to speak, and he's not clear, they ask his council to take a vote, and is asking, what are some other dates to where it may pass, but what are some other dates just in case, you know, you might want to do the February deadline, but is there a March deadline, you know? So, I think that's what he's trying to get at. What's some deadlines do we know that?
Let me clarify the, the schedule, and I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to misrepresent if I have a month off, but this is what the schedule is. By October 1 of every year, you have to submit your application. Between October and the 1st of the year, which this year is February 11, they'll have a regional meeting for the Tampa Bay area, which is what we submit our application to. At that regional meeting is the first consideration of the applications, where the, those members of the governing board that are sitting as that smaller regional group will rank the applications that are on the, in front of them. If we do not have our application complete, if it's changed, if it's revised, if anything is different, then our ranking can be affected. Do we have the opportunity to continue to submit information until their next meeting, which by my understanding, as I remember it now, is in April?
Okay.
We would have between then, but the first ranking is critical, and then the second ranking is just as critical, and then the final decision is in June. So, you have to follow the process as you go forward. Is it, do you get thrown out automatically if you don't have everything there in February? I couldn't tell you for sure that they would take a final action like that, but you don't want to have the least amount of accurate information in February for the first consideration of your ranking. So, we're trying to have and meet their deadlines as we move forward.
I know this is important to the administration, the mayor. I had a conversation with her over lunch with her and chief of staff. I know how important it is to, with this water situation, but to be fair to my colleagues, you know, all facts are facts, and we have to make sure that we, we have them all. So, if, if we can get SWIFTMUD, I don't know how this vote may go to move it, but if we can get the group from SWIFTMUD to come here on, next, it's the 6th, next week, right? Next week, the 4th, and give the actual data, information that Mr. Carlson looking for, I think that works favorable for you, to where if SWIFTMUD is saying this is a good idea, they're for it, they believe whatever, whatever, then I think, you know, it's a favorable turnout, so.
I can actually have the schedule sent to you from the representative from SWIFTMUD if that's sufficient within the hour after I go back upstairs. If you want to have somebody here, whether they send somebody or not is up to them, and they would only just simply state the facts to the schedule. They would not be presenting any information with regard to the project. I believe that it would be appreciated if we can make the presentation on the 4th, and the decisions, of course, are in your hands.
Councilman Dingfelder. Dingfelder.
Let me start by saying that Jan, for probably going on 20 years, tells all truths. She's straight up as they get. We might not always agree, I might not like what she says, but she's straight up as you get, number one. Number two, I think it's reasonable for us to ask SWIFTMUD to come to our meeting, but, you know, they might be, maybe they'd be willing to appear virtually just to talk about their procedures and their process. I don't think that's unreasonable. So, Jan, if you could ask them to do that, to appear virtually, I think, Bill, I would think from your perspective, that would suffice, and that's all I got on this subject.
Thank you very much. Anything else? All right, yes, sir.
Just to follow up, that, that only deals with one piece of it. The other piece of it is the, is the legislation. The whole reason why we're talking about this in the first place is the legislation, and Jan, could you, could you tell us, are you aware of the city's lobbyists' attitudes toward this bill? I've had three lobbyists tell me that members of the Water Department have gone to Tallahassee and lobbied in favor of it. Is, in your, to your knowledge, is that true?
Well, one, I would like to ask you when these lobbyists thought that they had seen the Water Department officials up there, because, one, that that would affect.
Last year, last year, not in the last couple weeks. I'm not aware in the last couple weeks.
No. The Water Department was not in Tallahassee lobbying for, which was at that time the TAP project. The last time that any representatives of, member of the Water Department were in Tallahassee was in November of '19 to attend a joint meeting of two industry groups, and then we went around and met with legislators to talk about potable reuse.
And do you know if the lobbying team, if, do you know if the lobbying team for the City of Tampa is lobbying for or against this bill?
They are not.
They're not lobbying for or against?
Right. They, the bill has just come out. It's under study by both the industry groups and all of the utilities as we look at it to see what the impact of it will be.
And if we, you know, we're passing resolutions against various bills, I mean, this is a preemption, this is another preemption by the state. It's going to cost our ratepayers $400 million plus operating expenses plus research and whatever else. If we pass a resolution to ask the lobbyists to lobby against it or to edit it, do you, you're not a charter attorney, sorry to put you in that, in that position, but, I mean, could we influence the, the, it sounds, what I hear is that this bill is going to go forward in some form, but if we ask our lobbyists to get the legislators to modify it, it might not be as hurtful to the City of Tampa. Does this, do you have any idea if this body, sorry if it's not a fair question, but does this body have any power to try to, to try to slow down or change or stop that bill?
Well, to the extent that the city council, the City of Tampa, would have impact on Tallahassee on any bill, of course, they would take notice of, of any action that you would take on a bill for or against. Let me say there are a lot of eyes on that bill and its corollary bill through the industry organizations, local governments, utilities. You're absolutely right. It will have a financial impact for those utilities that are discharging surface waters to meet the schedule that is set out in that bill right now.
Okay.
We could talk about this forever, but I'll be quiet.
Yeah, I mean, we might as well just take up the next Thursday's meeting. How do we conclude here? We have a motion?
We have a motion on the floor made by Councilman Carlson, seconded by Councilman Maniscalco. Shall we take a real call vote?
Miranda?
No.
Dingfelder?
No.
Can you repeat that, please?
He said no.
Viera?
Respectful no.
Citro?
Also respectfully no.
Goodez?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion denied with Councilmember Miranda being absent.
All right, anything else?
Could I have the noes, please, just for the, oh, excuse me, please?
Maniscalco and Carlson, yes.
Motion denied with Councilmember Dingfelder, Councilmember Viera, Councilmember Citro, Councilmember Goodez voting no.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, the other thing, it is related to the same subject. Patrick Atiga.
Like I said a couple weeks ago, posted a story, and it was similar to findings that I've had, that, that we approved this big pipes budget, and there seemed to be a slush fund that's been created. He calls it the Water Fund. In my conversations about, about PURE, remember the last time when it was TAP, they, we reduced the, the water rate increase by $5, $4 or $5 a month by, by taking TAP out of the rate increase, but in my conversations, their CFO said, we don't have to go to another rate case if we move forward with this because we can just refinance debt. That brings up the question, if there is, now, Patrick says it's like the lottery where money that was going to be spent on pipes now is sitting in a fund that the Water Department can use wherever they want, and this is from a conversation he had with someone for the Water Department, and then in my conversation, we were told that, that we don't have to refinance, we don't have to raise the rates to, to pass what ratepayers two years ago would have paid $5 more a month for because we're going to refinance debt. So, the question is, is there money, is there money in the Water Department based on the increases that we approved that could, could be reduced to reduce the rate? So, I'd like to make a motion that the, that the Water Department and the CFO's office come back to us in a month, let's say, March 4, to, to report on the status of the budget and where there might be savings or, or refinancing of bonds which could allow us to reduce water rates to ratepayers.
Second.
We have motion for Councilman Carlson, second for Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, that's it.
All right, Councilman Citro, I have to pass the gavel. Per request of our attorney Susan Johnson-Valez, I'd like to set a special call meeting for March 8 at 9:00 AM.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Or is she going to do it?
I believe, I believe she's going to ask you to make, she's going to ask counsel, if you can, just to be able to explain, please.
Susan Johnson-Valez is on the line regarding that March 8 meeting. Go ahead, and then we'll make a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Susan Johnson-Valez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Before you are, I prepared for counsel a memorandum requesting, again, that you schedule a special call meeting for Monday, March 8 at 9:00 AM to conduct public hearings on six notices of intent to suspend alcoholic beverage permits for establishments within the city. This would represent round three and four of issuing notices of intent to suspend alcoholic beverage permits.
So, it would be March 8 at 9:00 AM. Councilman Dingfelder, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'm always supportive of the motion. I mentioned to Attorney Johnson-Valez, that hand in hand with that request, I would love to hear if legal staff is working on any type of alternative process that we might be able to put into place and implement three or four months from now with, you know, with the hearing master, and I'm not saying that's going to resolve these hearings, because obviously these hearings need to be set and moved forward, and I'm willing to support them, but before we lose, before we get past the topic, or maybe after we vote on the topic, I'd like to hear if legal counsel is at least talking about it, discussing it, or scribbling, scribbling frantic.
Mr. Chairman, this is Gina Grimes, City Attorney.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Mr. Dingfelder, I think you touched on the subject this morning when we spoke, but we are already scheduled to come back in front of you next Thursday, February 4, to address your request.
Very good. All right, so, if there's anything else, Ms. Johnson-Valez, would someone like to then make a motion to set March 8, 2021 at 9:00 AM?
So move, Viera.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby.
Yep.
Just a reminder, counsel, this is a special call meeting, and it's set on a Monday, and it'll be so noticed as a special call meeting for that purpose.
I can't, I'm getting married that day. I'm joking.
Getting married again, again. We have motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And then I have a motion. We discussed the downtown parking situation. My, my request to the administration is that we not enforce the current rules of Ordinance 2020-122, at least until we revisit this and, and figure out what we're going to do with this. After everything that we've said this morning, I don't have to discuss it again, but that they not, I request that they not enforce the current ordinance while we sort things out. That's my motion. Any seconds?
Is there a second on that? Motion's been made by Councilman Maniscalco, seconded by Councilman Carlson. Shall we take a real call vote on that?
Dingfelder, you want to do the second, sec?
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
For the time being, yes.
Goodez?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Can I get a motion to receive and file?
Second.
From, or Councilman Goodez, I'm, Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. We'll be back at 5:01 PM.